Updates, we've kind of just said the latest things happening in Ojai. We wanted to kind of give more of an update on countywide at this point. And I'll keep it brief, but the statistics as of yesterday in Ventura County, we had 678 total cases with 12 new ones yesterday. Seems like we're averaging between about 10, 25 new cases a day in the, in the last couple of weeks. We had, we have six cases currently in the 93023 zip code, which does not mean, and we told this, we clarified with this with the county, that does not mean within the city limits of Ojai. Cases in the 93023 zip code.
And aren't most of those recovered?
I believe those six, I believe most of those are recovered.
Yeah.
And there's been one new case in the last two weeks in 93023. Twenty-eight hospitalized, 11 of those currently in the ICU. Nineteen deaths with the, which is obviously unfortunate. And the county this morning on their, at the Board of Supervisors meeting noted that there are expected to be a couple, a couple more that they're going to report in the next couple of days. They said that this morning, so.
And everyone had a morbid- morbidity, right?
Yes, at this point. And so the positive is number of people tested, 13,700, which has really grown and they're expanding the testing capacity. And I'll get to more on that in a moment. But the latest that's relevant really to Ojai that we wanted to make sure to explain, there's a lot of questions about it. A new public health order came out on May 7th. They're calling it the Stay Well Ventura County Order. The, they, the county has stated that they're now, their goal has shifted to safely reopening and getting in line with the state's stay-at-home order. The state governor Newsome announced that they are, you know, they have these phases and they're starting Phase Two. The county's in line with that and is starting Phase Two. And once certain criteria, criteria are met, they're going to start what they're calling the accelerated Phase Two, which would be expected to include restaurants with limited capacity, offices and malls, which we, we prepared this presentation over the weekend and this morning, the governor announced that offices and malls are already going to be reopening. So it's, when they said accelerated, they really appeared to mean it.
But The governor had a meeting with his finance director.
Yeah, unfortunately. So the order on May 7th, what it reopens here in the county is it allows retail businesses to reopen for curbside delivery or pickup. And essentially they have listed some retail sectors, but essentially they, they confirmed yesterday that it's almost all retail in the county can now reopen with curbside delivery or pickup. And it also allows the manufacturing and supply chain businesses to reopen as well. They also stated, which we get a lot of questions about here in Ojai. They stated that the, that hotels and motels are able to continue to operate. The county stated today that it doesn't need to be an essential business to, or it doesn't need, you don't, you don't have to travel our Santa Hotel only for essential business, which was a change from what I had heard previously. So we're looking into whether that's accurate. But we get a lot of questions about that from residents because obviously people are still seeing that the hotels here have some business.
James, I can tell you for what it's worth that a new order came out 15 minutes ago from the county that includes stuff that goes into effect tomorrow. And it still lists specifically hotels, lodging for leisure and tourism are still not permitted.
Oh, interesting. Oh, for leisure. Yeah.
That was my understanding of that.
Yeah, the county today had said at the Board of Supervisors that they weren't sure if there was a limitation there. But every order I've read says there is a limit not allowing leisure and tourism. So I think, I think that that was actually, you know, just incorrect, but. And so, so I believe the answer to that is what Councilmember Blatch just said, which is hotels and motels can operate, but not for leisure and tourism.
May I ask a question about that?
Yeah.
You mean to say that when I drive by that hotel on the, as you entered town and the parking lot is completely filled, those are all people here on essential business? How do you track that?
Yeah, and that's a question we asked, we've, we've asked the, the county to yesterday as well as how that's being tracked. Cause we're getting a lot of questions about it. And, and we don't, we don't know at this point if the county, how the county is tracking that. So that's something we're, we're looking into and seeing if they are tracking it.
Mayor?
Yes, Randy.
So it says your businesses must self-certify. Does that mean the essential businesses that have been open have to certify also?
Yes.
Yeah. So wouldn't, so wouldn't the county and wouldn't we have access to those records as to who has self-certified? So that might help Susan, that answer is if that, if that business has a certification with the county for being an essential business. Now it may not tell you how many people are actually there for that, but it would tell you are they open for, are they open for as an essential business? Does that make, did that make sense or did I confuse everyone?
No, I think that makes sense and, and we are currently, we had a meeting this morning to get set up to be able to access that data. Everything is happening very quickly. Opening came Fridays. We met today to be able to access that data so we can check and find out if businesses have self-certified or if they're open without self-certifying. So, so we can look at that. We could see, we can see, check and see if the hotels have certified and with what, you know, what they have self-certified.
And James, do you know what, do you know what the criteria for certification is?
So the, the county has some criteria available. We, I haven't looked at the counties because, and we'll get to this in a minute. The city has started to work on, or the city has put out our own checklist of, of self-certification. So we've been focused on that. We figure for within the city limits, if everybody is self-certifying with our requirements, we're, we're comfortable. So we've been working on that. So I, I'm not, they, they have their self-certification requirements online, but I'm not, I haven't spent a lot of time looking at the counties.
Well, I just think it would be important for, for the community to understand that we have, that we have a right to require certification also, or our certification could be stronger than the county's.
Yep. And I have a slide on that and a, and a couple of
Okay, James, is the sheriff on patrol going by and giving the people a little nudge when they forget about the social distancing? Over the weekend, when the visitors showed, to name one business, Beacon, which is right out there, you know, on the avenue, the main drag. Normally people are pretty careful around there, but boy, it was a, a crowd and people chatting away. Yeah, I know it's a tough thing to enforce, but just reminders to these, you know, to people, particularly someone in uniform might, you know, as we start to reopen, if we're too lax, we're going to be in real trouble.
Yeah. Yeah. And we've done a kind of a combination. We, we're, we are currently scheduling code enforcement on the weekends to try to address that and make sure people are wearing masks, which is still, I'll get to this too, but Ojai is still requiring, you know, we've had questions about that. Ojai is requiring the face coverings. So we've had code enforcement here on the weekends to try to encourage people to do it. And we, we've talked to PD as well about, about, you know, when they see it to encourage the social distancing. So we'll, we'll continue to do those things.
Thank you.
And so the county and the state today, well, the last couple of days have laid out these is the four stages to reopen. I just wanted to kind of show, because we get a lot of questions about these, these types of issues, but we are currently in stage two. And you'll notice it says gradually reopen retail, manufacturing and logistics, which is what happened Friday, curbside only retail. And then it says later relaxed retail restrictions, adapt and reopen schools, childcare offices and limited hospitality, personal services. And that continued today with the, the governor announcing that offices and he also said malls were going to reopen for curbside as well. So, so it, look, it's going to be this gradual reopening of these items. And then stage three is reopening movie theaters, religious services and personal and hospitality services. So those, you know, that's, those are the next couple of phases. Yes. Councilmember Wirek?
I just want to point out something that I think is an increasing problem. That is the, and just let the community know that I certainly am very concerned about it. And that's the implicit bias towards big box that is built into everything from the state all the way through the county. When I say retail curbside only, that just means except for big box. In effect, the big boxes are allowed if they happen to sell a little bit of food like Target. You can go in and buy a piece of clothing and not curbside delivery. So that is a misnomer and it's a, I consider it arbitrary, capricious and discriminatory against small business. To say in a, that since we're talking about defining risk, that it's a lower risk. What they're saying, which doesn't make any sense, is that it's a lower risk to go into a crowded Target by a pair of jeans. Go and buy, go inside Rains with much less crowds and the same or better physical distancing and buy a pair of jeans. And I consider that arbitrary, capricious and discriminatory. And I just, I just, you know, I, I think it's getting serious enough to sort of implicit bias towards big box and industrial retail distribution. That we ought to think about, you know, maybe composing a letter of concern both to the county and to the state regarding this. Cause it really disproportionately penalizes the way they're implementing this. Community-based cities like we are. That's my opinion.
I, may I speak?
Yes.
I, I, I wholeheartedly agree with Bill's opinion. I, I see no reason why they, some of our smaller stores can't have the same protocols as a grocery store.
Or a Target or a Costco.
Yeah, but our, excuse me. I, I go by a small shop and I see a dress in the window and there's a sign that says you can call them up if you're interested in something or whatever. But why couldn't I go in by myself with a mask on just one person at a time?
Right. Right. And, and right now they say a crowd can go into Target to buy jeans, but we can't want to go into, you know, a, a shop here and buy, and buy a pair of jeans. It's just not fair. It's not right. And I consider it again, capricious, arbitrary and discriminatory.
Mayor?
Yes, Randy.
At least like we're all going to chime in on this, but I think what's, to me, what's interesting is there's a lot of gray in some of these rules. And I think what we need to do is in, in, in Bill's thought process is to send a letter stating what we're going to do and why we're going to do it and remove the gray in our benefit. And, and justify it like Bill's saying. Our big box in Ojai is Ben Franklin. Our big box in Ojai is Rains. And so therefore we're going to treat our mini me's or our mini big boxes as big boxes in Ventura County. And I think we just justify it and we do it. And, and inform them that's why we're doing it and, and move on.
Other comments?
I have other comments when James is done and, and question.
Okay, I'll, I have a couple more. I'll try to keep it brief. We wanted to just point out some of the key points under the existing order. It still asks those 75 and older or those 70 and older with an active comorbidity to stay and follow, to stay at home and follow social distancing requirements. And then it lays out, you know, encouraging to still get medical care, nutrition, exercise, et cetera. But that's still in the current order. The current order also requires food facilities to provide food through delivery or pickup for takeout or drive-through and requires that the food be kept in a container. And it requires, or it specifically says that the businesses that shall remain closed in Ventura County still include shared swimming pools, spas, hot tubs and RV parks. And then also defines outdoor activities such as golfing, tennis, pickleball, walking, hiking, bicycling, gardening and others as essential activity. So, so those are still in the order. We wanted to just point out, because we get questions about the, the distinctions between the city and the county. Just the general rules that a city can be more strict, not less strict than the state or the county in this state. We are still one of the cities in the county that have additional requirements in place above and beyond what the county is requiring. And it's because we believe our city is vulnerable due to our closed valley and higher average age than other cities. So we're, we're taking that seriously. And you know, we have, we had a lot of calls and emails from people saying that they were concerned that things were opening up too, too quickly. So in response to that, we still are the only city in the county that has a face covering requirement. But I also think it's important to note that the CDC's recommended it and several other counties and cities have a face covering requirement.
And the governor's recommending it.
Yeah, we're the only ones in Ventura County. I think realistically it's going to be part of this reopening process at some.
Well, Mayor, you know, just regarding that, just regarding that, I'm probably out in the county more than, than the rest of you, but the Santa Barbara, I was there the other day purchasing some lumber. And you can't enter there, you know, they have face covering restrictions. Oxnard Home Depot has it, Ventura Lowe's has it. Even if the county is not requiring it, most of the businesses are. In fact, they're, they're demanding it that you can't enter the store without a face covering. So people will recognize the benefits to it. Whether it's, whether it's an ordinance or a policy or not, people are still doing what's right and what's in the best interest of all of us.
We just wanted, we wanted to take the chance to remind people, because we had a couple of people that called and said, I went out to Oxnard and, you know, this store and they don't have it, are you still enforcing it? So the answer is, is yes at this time. We also, on Friday, when everything reopened for curbside delivery and pickup, we adopted our own checklist and we issued an executive order, and I, I believe we're the only city that's done this as well. That an executive order requiring all businesses to self-certify with our city checklist. And the reason we did that is because we do have some additional requirements, like the face coverings. We wanted an easy list for people to, for business owners to be able to just check off and make sure they have everything needed. It requires face coverings, appropriate sanitation, sanitization measures, training for, you know, to make sure employees are aware of what to look for and, and all those types of things. And a shout out to the, the Chamber of Commerce. Jamie was working and communicating with store owners with, with us. And we were able to put that together with his help very quickly. You know, the order came out Thursday night and we had our checklist in place by Friday and
I think you worked late into the night along with you.
So, so we have some, you know, just, we wanted to make sure people are aware of these additional requirements. Again, we're trying not to be burdensome on businesses. We're trying to make it easy, but we, we do want people to know we are taking it seriously and we're probably, I expect for the next, you know, couple of, of weeks, we're going to have some additional requirements that other areas in Ventura County don't have because we're taking it seriously.
Yeah, I don't know if you can see me raising my hand.
I can, but go ahead.
Okay, James, I would think that the single most important thing for a business that's in the process of opening up is paid sick leave. To me, the most important thing is that if someone is sick or is coughing or has a runny nose, whatever, that they can stay home and not push themselves to go to work. So how, what are we doing about that? Is that a requirement? Can we legally require, require it? How does that work?
So in our checklist, we have measures taken to identify employees who are sick and the requirement that if they are sick, they send them home. There's been a lot coming at us quickly. So I don't, I know that there's been some changes to paid sick leave. I don't remember them offhand and I'm thinking City Attorney Summers probably does if he's.
Yeah, briefly, the new rules for paid sick leaves are that all employers with between 50 and 500 employees have to require paid sick leave for any person who has symptoms of the COVID-19 or is under quarantine for COVID-19 under a couple of rules and regulations. So that's going to cover a lot of employers. Not all though. For the Delta, for employers who aren't covered by, subject to that federal requirement, employees may be eligible for existing, any existing sick leave. And if they don't have an existing sick leave, the city does have the power if it desires to adopt that requirement to fill in the gap. We haven't yet done so, but we could do so if required or if desired by the council.
And that's two weeks paid sick leave, correct?
Yes. Oh, and I should add that any employee, even if not covered by paid sick leave would still have their job protected under the California Feminine Medical Leave Act, which again applies to most, but not all California employers, depending in part on the size of the, size of the employee count.
I need a clarification on what you just said. Did you just say between 50 and 100 employees? Was that, that was one thing you said, right?
Yes, that's my recollection and I'll confirm that number. But it is, it's, it doesn't apply to very large or, or small employers. And literally a number of our employers are going to be on a small side.
Let's just take our grocery stores. If a checker is not feeling well, do all those check, if they, and they, and they're not, not because of COVID or anything else, they just don't feel well. And are they, it, it seems like if we are indeed serious about this, that that person can stay home and, and rest until they feel 100% healthy. And, and not be docked pay.
I don't know the exact specifics of the number of employees that are held by the entities that own our grocery stores. So I do not know whether or not those employees would or would not be eligible to take paid, paid sick leave. But under the reopening protocols, the employer would be required to direct employees who are visibly ill from the, from COVID-19 to stay home. But whether or not the employees are entitled to paid sick leave under present law depends in part on the size of the employer. And that I don't know about the, the Vons, the Westridge. Rainbow Bridge is probably below that count, but Vons and Westbridge are maybe above that count for employees.
Well, that seems to be, to me, that, that seems to be a real gap in, you know, it just seems to me that to the benefit of the community, if we encourage, when people don't feel well, you know, we encourage them to take good care of themselves. When you don't feel well, you don't go out in public. It doesn't mean that you have the virus or anything like that. You just don't go out during this pandemic. But people are going to, not going to do that if they're living on the edge. If staying home for one day is the difference between, you know, paying their rent, buying groceries, we're talking about a lot of people at places like Rainbow Bridge and in our small towns, in our small town that fall in that category. I'm just thinking off the top of my head. That somehow during this pandemic, this, that needs to be addressed. I don't know how, but it should be part of the discussion.
Okay.
Yeah.
Mayor?
Thank you. Yes, Randy?
I, I just know as a small business owner, I'm required to provide my employees all 24 hours of paid sick leave a year. So small business owners are required to do that. I imagine unionized stores like Vons and such probably have a paid sick leave or something like that, just like our employees do. And I believe if any of these stores have filed under the PPP, that if they get the funding, that they're using that to, to the benefit of all of their employees. So there's a multitude of resources out there that are taking care of ill employees or semi-ill employees or real ill. And I just think that each business has to look at what's available to help their employees out. And that's what most of us are doing.
Thank you. That's exactly what I needed to know. Thank you.
Okay, James?
So I think we have just a couple more slides with, you know, we wanted to talk about this because it's a most frequent question we, we get by email online is, you know, what testing options are there? The Ventura County Healthcare Agency, Monday, I believe, but the days are blending together. They announced expanded COVID-19 testing. I, I said last week, so apparently it was last week. And they noted that they're at the seven urgent care sites and two additional sites that they now have nine testing sites. Nearest to Ojai is unfortunately Ventura. That's, that's the only challenge is we don't have one in the Ojai Valley. But they noted that essential workers can be tested and they give the contact information, which is on this slide. And that other Ventura County residents can call to be screened, but they're going to be screened based on whether they have the symptoms such as cough or shortness of breath and two of the, or two of the following fever, chilled muscle pain, headache, sore throat, new loss of taste or smell. So so that they're expanding it. This was a step forward of being able to offer it to groups of people. So that's where they're currently at. We get a lot of calls of people asking how to find out about that. So we wanted to provide it. And then this is kind of the update we've been given over the last couple of weeks and we've just updated. Which is our ongoing city actions. We're still closing North Signal Street to reduce visitor traffic at the trails. We also found out today from, and I'll send this email out, but Ojai Valley Land Conservancy is, is actually going to be closing some trails this weekend. So every weekend's, you know, we're trying to watch and respond as, as needed when we start seeing more people come in or, or, you know, more traffic come in. So we're still going to continue that. Shared playground equipment and the skate park still remain closed per the state and county orders. Those are still groups that are, that are not allowed to open. Virtual City Hall remains open and we have code enforcement here on, on, on week, on some, most weekends. We're still working with the farmer's market on the social distancing protocols. We've gotten good feedback on it. We've also installed food pickup zones and this week we announced to businesses that we're going to do retail business pickup zones. So that, trying to create some spaces so that, you know, Serendipity Toys, for example, is the one that took us up on it so far. We're going to create a little pickup zone so that somebody can shop there without having to, you know, get a spot far away and, and can maintain their social distancing. So we're still doing that. We also distributed last week new face covering signs and the protocol checklists. We'll continue to, to roll those out. And today we launched a virtual recreation program, which is a page that has recreation videos from some of the favorite instructors. And people could go on and watch those and follow along. And we'll continue to provide information and updates on the website, Facebook and Channel 10. And just, you know, next steps, we had a couple of things we wanted to talk about. We'll continue to be in contact with the county is a, is a key thing. And we're investigating some outdoor ideas and we're working through those, some outdoor dining and outdoor organized exercise options. Those are some of the things we've been, we've been getting asked about. So we're looking into those as things begin to open up. This is a key thing I wanted to talk about.
Oh, boy.
Yeah. You know, it's, it's not, you know, from my first year on the job, I'm getting all the things that, you know, that nobody, nobody wants to do. But we're looking at the calendar. It is May 12th. We're less than two months from 4th of July. We normally start seeing the chairs, I, I'd say at the end of this month for, for the 4th of July parade. And we just, our, my recommendation at this point, my plan at this point is to announce that until we know more, we can't allow the chairs on the, on the, on Ojai Avenue because of the, you know, everybody walking by, touching them, being crammed into tighter spaces, you know, potential spread.
So blocking the pickup zones.
And blocking the pickup zones. So, so I'm not, you know, enjoying this, saying this, but I think it needs to be done. I think we say at this point, it's until further notice. If things open up, we'll, we'll revisit, but at this point, you know, if, if we see chairs, like we're going to have to move them out of the way. And, you know, and move them over to, and, and put them, put them, get them out, get them out of there. So. I wanted to bring that up because we expect that it'll start happening and I wanted to see if there's any feedback or thoughts, but.
Yeah, I, I would like to give you, oh, go ahead, Ryan. Yeah, I see you.
I, I was just going to say, I want to give James some cover on this. I, I have been bothering him about this. I said, if we end up with a couple hundred chairs out there and we have to try and jam the genie back in the bottle and return them or do something else, it was going to be a mess. So I, I do want to make it clear though, and James, tell me if I say anything wrong, but we still have not figured out if we're having a parade, but we haven't canceled it. So it's still pending, but it hasn't been canceled. And we are not anticipating, you won't be able to have a chair if there's a parade. It's just that right now we're trying to prevent chairs from being placed on Ojai Avenue early, like they are traditionally. And as soon as we get that cleared up, there's still maybe more than ample opportunity to get your chair out there. If not early, then at least at the parade, if we're going to have a parade.
Yeah.
And we're still going to have a physical or social distancing of seven or six feet, right?
We'd, we're expecting that still, you know, it's.
Yeah, right. I mean, it. Yeah, right. I mean, it, they, it, that's one of the conditions, at least around the country, that there's still, even some of the liberal areas. Uh, I shouldn't say liberal areas, maybe the non-liberal areas, but places where they, uh, norm, they don't even want to close their state. They are asking for that social distancing. They recognize that as a danger. Uh, the mess that they've had down in New Orleans and in Louisiana because going in with the Mardi Gras. And the, uh, county fair has canceled. Uh, what message have we sent to the parade planners? Uh, are they clear that they do, that they proceed at their own risk? Uh, because. It doesn't seem to me like in six weeks that we want everybody in the world to descend on Ojai and then have you and the police trying to. Keep them six feet apart. You know, it's usually just a mob on the sidewalks.
Yeah, I think we're clear, but we'll, we will make clear again, we, uh, we did send a notice that. You know, uh, depending on what order is in place, you know, we, it may not, it may not proceed or it may proceed, you know, looking different than it has in the past. So.
We can't be the only parade in the county.
Right. And a lot of them have canceled, you know, but the hard thing, it, it is a balance. It's hard, you know, uh, do we. You know, uh, we're two months out, things change quickly, you know, are we confident that, that it can't happen? You know, I think right now we're all kind of in the wait and see, but what will happen soon is the, is the chairs. So that's what we're trying to address right away.
Well, you know. It seems that the fair, it's the fair, uh, committee, uh, have decided that in August, it's not going to be good. Uh, that way goes way past our parade. Uh, I think we need to give some serious consideration. Uh, Ryan?
Well, I, I agree. The, the, you know, the festivities around the parade, we're going to have to look at more specifically, but we got to make a decision now that's. Well in advance because traditionally these chairs show up, um, well in advance of the parade, uh, that we, we know that they're coming. Um, and now they're not coming, to make that clear. But looking at the parade, the, you know, the good news is we can social distance as far as we need to on Ojai Avenue. With only clusters of people who've been staying together and have been quarantined together, and there should be enough room. Now the festivities that happen after the Fourth of July, um, but I would, I would. I would hope that unless there's a good reason to have to cancel it. And with more orders opening stuff up tomorrow, I mean, it says office businesses, you know, in the, this latest order pretty much opening. I'd hope that there'd be a way we could do it. And I think it, it just fits as a right date for an important moment for everybody. Um, I think coming out of this and I think for our local community, seeing as though it is kind of the one. Real big holiday of the year that's celebrated, uh, community wide. Uh, maybe other than Ojai Day, which isn't necessarily a national holiday.
Yeah, a lot of people still have barbecues in their backyard, which would fit the, uh, social distancing. I guess I have some real concerns of what happens in Los Angeles. Because Los Angeles is making noises like they're not going to open up, even if the state starts rolling this thing out. If their numbers don't change, they're going to, uh, remain, you know, pretty tight down there. And guess what? All the people who feel like they're not, uh, you know, at risk are going to get and come up to Ojai or places close by. Uh, like the beach to celebrate. And I understand why they want to do it, but it just, uh. I'm on the endangered species list, as I call it, the over seventy-five crowds. So I don't plan to be there, but for those.
Buddy, if we have a parade, you're in it as the mayor. You can't get out of it.
The mayor pro tem is going to represent us. Susan asks to be recognized and I'll come to Randy.
Mayor, I, I share your concerns and not just because I'm seventy-one and getting in, in the endangered species category. But, um, I think it just seems so extreme. We're, right now we're closing the playgrounds, which I want to discuss also. Um, it just seems very extreme to go from this lockdown to thinking we can have a, a crowd, crowd control on the Fourth of July. To me, that's completely unrealistic. And I would just, I would sit down with the committee. And explain what, you know, from everything that we're seeing, what they're predicting. Um, it just seems like we should encourage healthy activity. People can, can be in, if they can't social distance in their own backyard, how do we expect them to do that? Um, you know, and if we go open up the, are we opening up the parks? It just feels like it isn't part of a gradual transition to be planning for the Fourth of July. And if the, with, with the county closing the fair, I think if other, it just feels, uh. Uh, from one extreme to the other, to be thinking we can have a Fourth of July celebration in six weeks.
Okay, thank you, Suz. Uh, Randy, you, you wanted to say something?
Uh, well, quickly, I was going to say we could get the Pope Mobile for you, but.
Get what?
The Pope Mobile. Here's, um, this is where the, I, I think about this daily, is the double-edged sword. Um, that we have in our community is, first of all, we're the healthiest community in the county. We have the fewest number of, of sickness and the fewest, we ju- we, we're the healthiest.
And we have the lowest rate for a hundred thousand in, in the whole county.
But I'm just saying, in the county, in our little area. And, and the hardest part for me is, I think about as we want to open and we need to open. Um, a- a- and I under, and I understand that. We also, we're, we're also going to be, uh, the biggest attraction. If I live in LA and I want to go to a safe city to spend a weekend or to spend a day. Um, I mean, Ojai has a bright light sh- shined on it. Um, you know, I know we're not doing any marketing. I know that we're not doing any, uh, publicity about who we are, what we are. And how safe we are, but it's out there. And, um, and that's that, that to me is the fine line we walk between. How do we open and how do we open safely for our community members? And then how do we prevent, lack for a better word, but, um, we, because we can't. But how do we, you know, prevent the overflow from all these other communities coming in and just using us? So it's a fine line that we have to walk and, and, and I know we're all aware of it. I know you, I know, I know we all are. Um, and I just think we have to be careful with what we do and how we do it. And, and also how it gets out into the public domain. I understand we're in Bonapetite, Ojai City again. Um, so there's a cover magazine about us and what we are and who we are and what we're doing.
Really?
Yeah, um, so I just think it's important that we recognize that. And so again, as much as I want a parade, as much as I'd, I'd like to see it. The idea that we're a safe, safe community and now we're having a large parade. And Ventura isn't having theirs and Santa Paul isn't having theirs, Carpinteria isn't having theirs. I mean, we're just, we're going to be, um, a fatal attraction. And I just think we have to be careful about this.
I agree with you, Randy. I think it's a very high-risk situation. I think we wait a couple more weeks. But I don't think we wait till the last minute to say yes or no. But it seems to me right now that if the parade were just to be, you know, small groups of locals, you know. Carrying flags and riding bicycles and that sort of thing, just in commemoration of the Fourth of July. That'd be one thing, but that's not the, what it is. We're the probably best known as the only old-timey, small-town, uh, parade. You know, horses and the whole, uh, you know, routine and music. Uh, it just seems like we're sending an invitation to the outer world and if Los Angeles is still, you know, the hu- uh, hotspot. In the bad sense, a hotspot, uh, and they're shut down, guess where the people are going to come? We don't have to advertise. They, all you have to do is put Ojai in on the internet and everybody knows. So. Uh, there are other comments on this before we get?
Mayor, I have a comment.
Yeah, Ryan?
I, I just, I, I respectfully disagree with all of that. I think that that's not science-based, that's feeling-based. I don't think that being outside, being.
You say this as a lawyer or as a doctor?
Well, I, I'm saying this as a council member who's done a lot of research, talking to a lot of doctors, and I don't think any of your doctors either, last time I checked. So. I don't think.
I said, God, just following the science.
Quite a violation of my, uh, of my responsibility here, but I just disagree. I haven't heard from any doctors that it was a horrible, uh, idea. I haven't heard any, the state forbidding, prohibiting specifically parades or any type of gatherings like that. And I think that it's completely different. When you talk about a parade that you don't have people from LA who want to come see our Little League baseball team riding the parade. And see the local mayor wave to everybody. I don't think it's an attraction out of town. I, I mean, we've been to the parade how many times? It's, as all of the quaint Ojainesses there is, the Fourth of July is not a. Big out-of-town draw for people to come and see our local community. And that's why I think it's important. And of course I would defer to anyone, um, who knows better than I or any of us regarding. The protocols that might be necessary to do it, but at this point to take it off the table. Um, I, I just think is premature and I, I, I didn't know. I'm, I'm glad to hear the sense of the council because. I, it's been concerning because the parade itself has kind of been on Facebook, talking like they were. Um, certain that they were carrying on. So I thought maybe.
That's what they're saying. And that's where I'm getting calls from people who are greatly concerned, saying, why are you people doing this? We've gone through all this for the locals and now you're going to open things up, uh, with a carnival in effect. What about the, uh, you know, the fireworks show and all that, you know?
Well, I, I.
Uh, I, I agree, we can wait a couple of weeks, but I'm not asking, we do something tonight? But I think we should think seriously and really, and you should continue your research with the scientists because. What you're hearing, what I'm hearing apparently is different.
Well, the, the idea that if you, you know, if you don't want to go to the parade, don't go to the, go to the parade. I mean, the, the idea.
No, that's not the idea. I'm not saying this for me. I'm saying it for you and for the rest of the community. Uh, if we end up inviting the world in, uh, let's see how, what, what happens. Germany, uh, was considered to be one of the great, uh, examples of how to do this, and now they're starting to have problems. Uh, you know, it's, uh.
Well, their Fourth of July isn't nearly as important as ours, I don't think.
Yeah, well, it's a little, you know, I wouldn't make light of it like that, Ryan, but.
I get your point.
Doing about parades right now. Last time I heard about a parade in Germany, I'm pretty sure we don't want to talk about it. So.
Now, that's.
I just think it's hard to decide and I'd like to get more information and, and maybe put it on a future agenda, maybe the next council meeting.
Okay.
Right, no one's suggesting anything other than that.
Yeah.
Okay, I second Ryan's motion to put it on next council agenda.
Okay, but I want to make, may I make a comment? If you're talking about the parade, you're also talking about opening up Libby Park and the playground. I cannot, I mean, I'm already sick to death of seeing that yellow tape. I want to tell you what I observed. You know where the kids are playing now? They're playing in Libby Bowl. They're playing on the stage. They're running around in between the seats and flipping them upside down. You're going to see kids playing in the park somewhere. And to me, an outdoor playground where kids are running around, they're not sitting still. To me, that's a low-risk activity. And it saddens me deeply to see the, the playground tape. So if you're going to be discussing and, uh, considering, I have my own ideas about all of this. Believe me, I do.
I'm sure you do.
But I'm very respectful of the fact that there are, that there are vulnerable people in the community. For that reason, I'm happy to wear my mask. I'm happy not to cough on anyone. I abide by the proto, the social distancing protocol. But to, to me, the children running around in the park are not the vulnerable population. And, um, if, yes, so if you go forward with the Fourth of July, the park needs to be opened up. That, that, that would be just absurd. That's all I want to say.
So, Mayor? Mayor?
Randy, go.
I just, I just wanted to chime in, just, just, uh, uh, um. A, a, a joyful response to Ryan that, that I appreciated his feelings also. Um, but, uh, you know, it is interesting, um, you know, I was at Libby Park Saturday night at seven o'clock. And Suz, I did observe the same thing that you just said. And, um, and, and it made me uncomfortable. Um, there were fifteen, you know, twelve, fifteen young kids, you know, sitting in the bowl. And, um, they were eyeing at me as much as I was eyeing them. Um, because I knew exactly what they were going to be doing and they didn't want to do it in front of an adult. Um, you know, we had kids riding skateboards up on the stage and I asked them. To not remove themselves from the facility, but to not ride on the stage, but ride down on the asphalt where the damage is less. Um, and then I came across a group of adults on the tennis courts, dancing to loud music. Trying to social distance, but the reality was they were and they weren't. So, yeah, you know, all of it is just going to be difficult to do. But, but I want to throw this thing out about children. Um. There's law enforcement officers and first responders that have children. That, um, might be more vulnerable to this virus than other children. Let's say Suz's daughter's child. Um, I don't know if you would want those kids interacting with your daughter's kids. If you knew the situation that their parents are in. So that's what I'm trying to say. There's a fine line here. Um, between what we do and how we do it, when we do it. And I just think that we need to lean to the safe practice versus the hurry-up practice. That's just my two cents.
Bill, did you want to say something?
Uh, just one short comment of, uh, Ryan, I think we're all a little on edge, seeing the effect of having the beaches closed. Uh, in Ventura County, at least the parking aspect. And the result of that in our trails and up in our mountains has just been overwhelming. And I think it's just a data point for us to consider relative to the July Fourth aspect.
Okay, James, where are we?
If I could say one thing to just, the, um, the playgrounds, we, we actually did reach out to the county. Cause we, you know, we, uh, we heard counsel out in clear last meeting that that was a, you know, a priority. The county did say, and it goes back to what we said earlier, if we can be more strict, not less strict. And the county, uh, said, and they confirmed with the state that, that they currently are not allowed by either the state or the county to be open. So it's not our, we're, we're not making the choice to close, close. That's a, uh, an order from the state and the county, which I know the county did release a new one a couple of ago, but I didn't expect that to change on that order. So. Uh, it's not like somebody, no, um.
James, I had a, a question regarding parking, the parking lot at our facilities.
Uh-huh.
I know that we're not allowed to picnic and I know we're not allowed into the play areas. Um, is there any reason that the parking lots aren't open? Um, for people to park when they want to walk the facility or walk their dog in the facility or to, um, exercise on the facility?
No, we were, I actually was going to bring that up. We, so, um, a lot of agencies kept them closed for Mother's Day because of the fear of, of, uh, parties at the park. Um, so we had them closed for, through Mother's Day was our plan. So, uh. I, I was planning to try to reopen the parking lots at the park this week unless there's any objection. So, uh, we had Easter and Mother's Day in a short period. So that's, those were the two, two reasons why they were closed, but.
Right.
Um, so we can get those reopened. Um, the, um, the last thing is we, we'll put it out on the next agenda for the Fourth of July parade. And we'll ask the, uh, Fourth of July committee to pr- provide a plan of what they're planning to do for that meeting. So. Uh, and then last, on this next steps plan, as we're seeing currently. And, uh, as we saw with the, that new order coming out Friday, another new order coming out today, but orders are coming out quickly. We're trying to respond as quickly as we can. And so one of the, um, ideas we had that I wanted to, um, to, uh, see if council was interested in. Is creating an ad hoc committee with two members of council to, uh, you know, weigh in and, and, uh, recommend protocols for these things. As the new public health orders develop. Um, and to allow, uh, you know, to, uh, they, they could be liaisons to get feedback from residents, businesses, other agencies, et cetera. Um, and so we were proposing that as a solution to these. Uh, you know, the Thursday night order that we have to implement Friday, you know, and, um. And the, a- again, tonight's another example, a Tuesday night order that apparently will be implementing tomorrow. So. Um, so, you know, we've, we've, uh, proposed that, but obviously council, you know, can either decide. To, um, to take that recommendation or to, uh, to just have staff continue to do so.
Mayor, I was, I would volunteer.
Okay, we have one volunteer, is it? Is there a second one?
Bill, I would volunteer.
You would volunteer? Okay. Any other nominations? If not, okay. Does the council have any problem with the subcommittee of Bill and Randy, uh, looking into this? And if not, okay, so ordered. Good luck, guys. Tough job.
Yeah, thank you, James. Fabulous job.
Thank you. So that, that's all we had. That, that are, you know, that's all, it's a, it's a lot, but that's, that's the latest on coronavirus.
Okay, is there anything else from the council on coronavirus before we move to the next one?
Mayor, before you move on, I have one clarification if I could.
Okay, uh, city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor Council, I took the opportunity to double-check my notes on these paid sick leave issue. And the, the Federal Families First Coronavirus Response Act. Applies to all private employers with five hundred or less employees. So a small business like Rainbow Bridge is going to be subject to that, which provides for two weeks of paid sick leave. for people who are sick or under quarantine at, uh, their full, their, most of their full salary with a cap of $5,000. And two thirds of their salary with a cap of $2,000 for caregivers who are, for example, caring for someone at home who is sick or is out of school. There's certain restrictions applicable depending on the size of the employer, but a small business like River Bridge would be covered with certain restrictions. Thank you.
And, oh, thank you. Uh, may I ask a question?
Yes, Suz, go.
I just want to make, make sure that these, uh, that Rainbow Bridge, for example, knows about this. Do we take that for granted? That they have that information?
I would suggest that one of the things that the ad hoc committee that we, that the council just created, take a look at, is making sure that the businesses, the committee are aware of the benefits and the obligation that they are under, under the new rules.
Okay. Or and commute, and Jamie of the chamber knows this, James?
I think Jamie does, but we're in contact, so we'll make sure he's aware and ask him to send an email blast. He's been sending out email blasts on PPP.
That was great information, uh, Matt. Thank you.
Ma- Mayor, also, um, I believe, um, the EDC is putting out, um, things annually along with Jamie. So there's a lot of Suz. There is a lot of this information being shared, but it wouldn't hurt for us to make a concerted effort to do it also.
Yeah. Yeah. I think that Jamie and Bruce are doing a good job at that, at least all of the stuff I see on the internet.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, should we move to the next item, James?
One, one more thing, uh, on this, please.
Yes.
Uh, James, are we following up on the nursing homes? Is there, how is everything going? Because the reports nationally are just abysmal, the number of deaths.
Yeah, yeah. So we've, we've been in contact with them. We, we have that information, that, that, uh, chart we've prepared and we've updated that. So we could, we can, uh, get that out and then, uh, and discuss that too. It is, you know, the information that's come out lately has been pretty depressing countrywide, but we're, we were seeing pretty good uh, measure, measures and responses taken by the local, uh, groups. So.
Yes, it looked good. It looked good. Yeah.
Yeah, Dr. Levin and, and his people were on this about two weeks ago, where other jurisdictions weren't even reporting it.
That's one of the real success stories for Ventura County, I think.
Yeah.
Well, also, also for Ojai.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, let's go to, uh, the moratorium on commercial evictions. Uh, James?
Yeah, this is.